Good evening, and before we begin to present some technical issues, I apologize for that. I would like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 26th, at 7:30 PM in the board room. Chairman, our people.
Yep.
That helps.
That helps. Should I repeat that, or are we good? All right. We'll move on. No real chairperson's report. I just want to kind of set the stage for the meeting this evening. There's been a lot of work done by Dr. Adley and the cabinet and his team in answering a lot of questions that have come to the board via public comment through a lot of folks, many of them participating through the committees and the other boards on RTM and Board of Finance. All good questions. So, the administration has spent a lot of time answering a lot of those questions. But in terms of process and the overall date line that we're following with the budget process, tonight begins kind of the formal questions and responses that come in from RTM Education, RTM F&amp;B, and Board of Finance. So, we'll have those questions this evening. A lot of people have worked hard behind the scenes to organize their thoughts, and it's most appreciated as we go through this budget process. A lot of work will be done behind the scenes coordinating questions that we got that were answered with new questions that came up through this evening's meeting, but we will get it all done and keep the focus on delivering the right budget for the continued education of our children. So, with that, I will turn it over to public comments. Michelle.
Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comments, please click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comments. You will have up to three minutes to comment. User Darian CPAC, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, this is Kelly Dupont, on behalf of CPAC. I just have a couple of comments based on last week's meeting. I know we talked a lot about the Team Taught and the SESS facilitator position. Quickly about the Team Taught, we're concerned about losing Team Taught classes at the high school. Team Taught classes are an important support for students, especially in a year when we are going to see academic slide due to COVID. The other thing is without the option of Team Taught classes, students may need to take another lab Taught class, which is difficult to fit in schedules oftentimes, and many students are forced not to take an elective, which could be a strength and a class that they would enjoy in excellent. So, that's my comments on Team Taught. And then, I know there was a thorough presentation on the SESS to Assistant Principal presentation, and there were a lot of the pros for it, but we still have quite a few questions that have come up, as we've discussed it through CPAC. One of them is if facilitators are assistant principals, as assistant principals are expected to maintain their current compliance duties and attend the majority of PPT meetings, how much unused time do they have in their work, in their week now? Another one is how many hours per week will they have to review and mentor special education teachers in best practices for SDI and monitor the programmatic implementation of individualized SDI in the general special education classrooms? I know that's a mouthful. Another thing, just in thinking about this, is how many students with IEPs are at each school, and how many special education personnel will they be responsible for overseeing? Another quick question was who is currently monitoring SDI and differentiated instructional practices at the elementary level? So, those are CPAC's comments on that. You may hear from others tonight, but thank you, everybody. I know this is a long process, and appreciate everything everybody's doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you again, please provide your name and address?
You are muted?
You're muted.
Oh, this is, sorry about that. This is Kelly Dupont, 55 Allwood Road.
Thank you, Mrs. Dupont. Appreciate that.
Username Michelle Minton, you are unmuted and recognized. You are still muted, Ms. Minton?
Hello?
You can hear you now.
My name is Michelle Minton, and I've lived at 107 Raymond Street since 2002. One of my five children has been a student at Fitch for four years since its inception. I wanted to make a statement in support of Fitch Academy, encourage continued funding for both operational considerations as well as a process to more formulate its mission and strategy. As the district looks to double the students at Fitch in two years' time, now is the right time to start assessing short and long-term services and the kind of staffing that will support this growth. Fitch has thus far been able to grow and change organically. However, a large student body, a new space, more course offerings, including increased choice and more lab-based classes, and perhaps more diverse student needs and age populations, require thoughtful, metered approach. Furthermore, identifying students early and providing robust IEPs to meet needs and making the program and benefits common knowledge in our district are key goals to fully make Fitch an entrenched part of the DHS community. This requires effort and funding at a time when it's most useful, next year, when decisions about expansion will have to be made and committed to. My daughter has experienced no less than a metamorphosis, and we are eternally grateful. You already have a model of what invested, caring, and skilled teachers, paraprofessionals, and psychologists look like. Providing support in the budget and from the Board of Ed will ensure that our community of learners is able to flourish well into the future.
Thank you, Mrs. Minton.
Username Jamie Zionik, you are unmuted and recognized. Jamie Zionik, you are still muted?
Sorry about that. Jamie Zionik, 15 Holmes Court, also with Darian CPAC. I'm following up on the comments made by Kelly Dupont and Michelle Minton. First of all, regarding the SES facilitators to assistant principals, I think we need to wait to hear from Marilyn Friend, who is the district's contractor and a contractor that has been supported by the BOE and the CoTaught classes that have been implemented at the middle and high school. She's planning to report on SDI for the elementary. So, I think we need to hear Marilyn Friend's report before making this decision on how that will be implemented at the elementary school, elementary schools. Additionally, I'd like to follow up on the 900 hours. Dr. Adley commented on it last week. I assume he's probably planning to report tonight, but I'm a little concerned about those hours only being made up on Friday afternoons asynchronously. There are over 100 hours yet to make up, and I think there's 16 Fridays left in the school year. Any plan that we have for those hours, I think, needs to be started soon, and as long as we're in an in-person model at the elementary schools, I'm not sure why they would be made up in an asynchronous manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zionik.
There are no more raised hands at this time?
Give them a minute.
Okay.
Good. Okay. Moving on to next agenda item, comments from boards and committees that we work with. So, I will open it up to comments or questions from Board of Finance.
If any member from the Board of Finance has any comments or questions, please raise your hands.
Okay, we can always come back if someone joins, and Board of Finance knows they can submit questions, and we'll continue to work with the Board of Finance on their questions and thoughts around the budget. Moving on to RTM Education. Clara? I know RTM Education has submitted questions around quarter to six this evening.
Okay.
But we'll open it up, Clara, if you're there.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you for joining.
Great. Okay. Okay, this is what the Education Committee has decided to submit in terms of questions and comments. We appreciate your prompt answers to the questions we asked on the Saturday, January 9th meeting. We met on January 11th to continue to discuss the budget, and the comments and questions below are those expressed at that meeting. And we hope that this will begin a dialogue or continue a dialogue with the Board of Ed. We're not, we want to continue to be a part of the discussion rather than have just the questions answered, you know, after this meeting. It's our objective to thoroughly analyze the Board of Ed budget by questioning funds proposed for academic and extracurricular programs and facilities, including enrollment and staffing numbers, so we can demonstrate that Darian students are getting the best education at a fiscally responsible cost to the taxpayer. We expect to keep the Board of Ed informed about education concerns in the community as we advocate for both students and taxpayers. Several of our members commented that a 3.99% increase is substantial and is unsustainable. We note that while last year's increase was reduced, the overall budget has increased each year. We realize that much of the budget is based on contractual costs, but the Board of Ed has control over the number of teachers and administrators who are hired. While the town is affluent, many residents have experienced job loss, and small businesses are hurting. Overspending here, combined with the pandemic and uncertainties at the state level, may expose residents to financial hardship. This point of view on our committee was countered by comments that the education budget is a responsible, comprehensive plan and should not be limited, as suggested by the Board of Finance. The budget supports programs and initiatives for all Darian students. COVID-19 has taken a toll academically, and students need strong academic programs with remediation when indicated. Funds for SEL programs to support students will continue to be necessary when schools attempt to return to a pre-COVID-19 status. It was also noted that the town has a healthy reserve fund, one that's greater than the amount needed to maintain a AAA bond rating, and using this fund for extraordinary expenses is appropriate. Some members suggested that if the funds are not used, it's possible that residents are being overtaxed. This viewpoint was not universal. In terms of questions about the RCs, I don't know if it's too time-consuming to read them all, so I'll try to read a couple of sample ones, I think, and, you know, we certainly expect that we'll discuss all of them at some point. In the high school RCO1, the lab model generated a lot of discussion. The lab model involved co-teaching in math, English, and history. We thought it would be helpful for the students who will need remedial help, particularly if there's been a gap in their learning due to COVID. If the 200 level at Darian High School has been eliminated, what will be the impact of the loss of team teaching on the students who may struggle, and what could be the impact on instruction and assignments in the 300 level class? We also wonder if the department heads weighed in on this, how they're working out. So, they were two significant questions about RCO1. At Middlesex, the concern was the enrollment is down, the costs are up, and what's the tipping point for the reduction of a number of teams under the team model? When staffing is added for a bubble class, should it not be reduced when the enrollment declines? RCs involving the elementary schools, we definitely support keeping the funds in budget control. There are lots of places where we thought that the enrollment in elementary school could increase. We wonder if the Malone and McBreen study took into account the exodus of families from New York due to COVID-19, whether the children might, or parents might want to retain their children, and that would impact the enrollment. We wondered if teachers have adequate para-help. Might parent volunteers be trained to work as lunch monitors, or is the $32,000 in the budget well-spent there? We needed also to ask about the Open Choice Program, to see if the program is not begun for '21, '22, would you still need startup funds, whether these students are in the enrollment numbers, and whether, how the district will decide what school they will attend, what we do about the siblings? Also, we wanted to know about intramurals at the elementary school. I believe one elementary school offers them. We want to know if funds are available for all the elementary schools, is the money only going to one school, and whether there could be a better explanation here? The athletic department, RC 11, why is maintenance not charged to community organizations who run our facilities? We like the 30/70 split, and we ask, it's a little bit of an outlier, but if parents must pay for off-site facilities, should families chip in for expenses associated with fields and gyms? So, the other thing, in terms of security in RC 12, we cannot underestimate the importance of security. Best in class should be our goal. We realize that it cannot be discussed in public, but have you compared what's being done in our dirt or in neighboring towns? Have you worked with a consultant for a security audit? And we also expect that security at Middlesex will be tightened. Mistakes happen, but we are a little bit concerned about, we read about, what we read about Middlesex having a break-in. RC 15, do you have enough IT help considering the new software and K2 Chromebooks, as well as the need for help with remote learning? Should remote learning continue into next year? In RC 18, we had a lot of questions about the step movement, column changes, is there an average of the steps? Can we get a staff profile? Do we have, for example, do we have a veteran staff with many teachers at top steps or a newer staff? How long does it take for a teacher to become tenured? And what is teacher evaluation? What does that involve? We were also concerned about recruiting. What are you doing to improve that? We like the teacher and residence proposal, but we also, especially the spirit of the program, but wonder how the program is administrated, including definition of responsibilities. This will be critical to its success. Please give this a lot of thought, and can you give example of the work Crec has done with this program? Also, can you provide information on how the increases in staffing, administrators and teachers over the past five years aligns with the increase in enrollment? We also want to point out that the community has been discussing a lot the SESS versus AP facilitator, and we appreciate that there was an additional explanation, but there's an awful lot of concern still, and we see that better oversight might be provided by an assistant principal, but is our contact with students diminished? Will family support provided by SES facilitators be diminished? Who's responsible for enforcement of the present model? Who will monitor student outcomes in the AP model? This is not, this is a different question. Do consultant costs in RC 24 represent more or better service or higher prices? Can we have a breakdown of the number of outplaced students in public schools and in private placements? And in capital, the Holmes parking lot is in the budget for 2021, '22, but it's considered a Level III. This is the one that involves the Curtis property. We wonder when the project will be done, and if you could clarify just exactly when that will be done. And that is all. Thank you all so much, and thanks to the Education Committee for helping with, for putting together these questions.
This is Artori. Thank you very much, and thanks to your committee for spending the time to go through the budget and organize your thoughts and questions and participating. We appreciate it and look forward to continuing to work with you on all of this.
So do we. Thanks very much to all of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do we have a copy of that email?
Yes, it came to me right before the meeting, and I've sent it all out to you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. Moving on, we will move on to RTM F&amp;B. I'm not sure if Jack's on, or I think he emailed who might be participating. Bear with me. We are looking for Peter Orfanos or Beth Lane.
Mr. Orfanos, you are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. Would you be kind enough to unmute Beth Lane also, because we're going to be reading through our presentation together?
Sure. Thank you.
I'm sorry, the last name?
Beth Lane, L-A-N-E.
Beth Lane.
I have an Alex Lane?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
She is unmuted as well at this time.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Peter Orfanos, and along with Beth, I am, we're the two vice chairs of the Finance and Budget Committee of the RTM. We'll be representing all of the varied viewpoints of the members of the committee. We want to thank the Board of Education for their work on behalf of the children and the citizens of Darian, who've always had the difficult job of protecting and educating the youngest of us, but this year has added so many complexities to that task, even down to how to meet safely. We're grateful for the extra attention you've given to your duty.
We also want to thank Dr. Adley and his entire staff for the extraordinary effort they have expended on behalf of not only the school district, but the entire town. Elisa Kasucci and her team of nurses have been contact tracing indefatigably, including nights and weekends. COVID has expanded the job descriptions of teachers and staff alike and in ways that no one could have imagined. We cannot thank them enough for rising to the occasion. The RTM Finance and Budget Committee would like to thank the Darian Board of Education for providing the committee the opportunity to comment on the Darian superintendent's proposed budget. We understand the board is still in their initial stages of reviewing this budget.
Our comments have been reviewed and reflect the sense of the meeting to ensure that they represent the committee's view. Our overall comments will be different from prior years. They reflect the educational experience this year resulting from the COVID pandemic, as well as how this experience might affect educational needs in future budget years. The elephant in the room is that the budget is an increase of 3.99% from the approved fiscal year 2021 budget. That's a large increase. One committee stated that the increase could be acceptable if fully supported by the facts and the rationale. That is a job now before the administration and the Board of Education.
In a normal budget season, the superintendent's budget presentation might have been sufficient. However, due to the modifications to the Board of Education fiscal year 21 budget, this year's budget is really a review of two years of operating budget. The committee's ability to assess and evaluate the budget would be enhanced by understanding the administration's evolution in this budget. In this thought process, the committee felt the budget presentation lacked the story relating last year's approved budget to where we are today. This desired story sets the grounding for the proposed budget. Is the starting point last year's final revised fiscal year 21 budget? From there, what expenses are changing to return this budget to a normal school year, including budget initiatives from fiscal year 21 reinstated, expense and revenue reductions reinstated? Examples of expense and revenue reinstatements are the $57,000 in deferred uniforms from fiscal year 21 and the increases in summer school and ELP revenues. What are the incremental expenses due to remediation and compensatory services due to student outcomes associated with the COVID learning experience? Specifically, how much of the increases in RC 24 consultant services, contracted speech, and pupil evaluation are attributable to remediation and compensatory services? What were the salary increases prior to any changes to FTE recommendations included in this budget? What are the expenses and revenue, if applicable, associated with new initiatives or accounting changes for fiscal year 22? What other increases have occurred from fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 22 that affect this budget increase? We noted that health insurance expense in RC 25 accounts for approximately 22% of the overall proposed budget increase. What capital requests were specifically cut from fiscal year 21 and are now part of the fiscal year 22 capital request? Are there increases in the costs associated with those reinstated items deferred last year?
We understand that certain components, component parts of this have been identified and discussed in the proposed budget deliberations. However, working with our committee to quantify and telling the story of this budget would be most helpful in explaining the final budget to the full RTM. Obviously, education in these times is challenging and stressful for all concerned. We have learned of two budget proposals, both aimed at benefiting students, specifically one advanced by the administration to upgrade five SESS facilitators to SESS APs, and another expressed by an instructor to augment and certainly not reduce the number of teacher aides, also known as paras, and substitutes. That said, the administration-proposed budget includes only one, the one which would add resources for principals. At page 171, under the tab Object Detail Personnel of the budget book, though, there is a slight reduction in the number of aides for instructors. With the stress already experienced by instructors, reducing the number of aides and failing to augment the number of aides will likely add to instructors' stress and is at odds with the administration's and the board's previous expression of appreciation for their hard work. We do recognize that the hiring of lunch monitors is an attempt to address this issue. While the sense of the committee is to support the administration's Special Education Assistant Principals proposal, based largely on the Tuesday discussion by Assistant Superintendent Shirley Klein, the committee also urges the board to reject the proposed reduction in the number of aides and instead augment the number of aides. The challenge is to free up other expenses proposed that would support hiring additional aides and send a more meaningful message to instructors as just how much the board appreciates their efforts in these difficult times. The committee voiced its support conceptually for the teacher and residence program. We believe this will provide positive student experiences and outcomes. The committee appeared to be favorable to the $81,000 expense, but reserves the right for future review.
The committee looks forward to additional board discussions on the building status report for $200,000, which the committee believes could be deferred. The addition of two buses, not discussed at the committee's last meeting. Potential to push back all uniform replacements by one year. And review by board members addressing those accounts where the run rate is higher than prior normal years. There have been several discussions regarding capital. The committee's views are as follows. In the current request for capital, what projects are being reinstated from the fiscal year 21, and what is the cost increase, if any, due to deferring these projects? There has been discussion of changing certain definitions regarding capital and capital accruals. The committee encourages a full conversation with the Board of Finance and Darian Director of Finance to see if certain future projects might fall into the new definitions, even though the committee is not necessarily in favor of certain Board of Selectmen or Board of Education potential accruals under the new definition. Technology is considered part of curriculum and, as such, should remain as an operating expense. If technology is moved to capital, either the Board of Finance or the RTM would be able to cut the budgeted technology. We believe curriculum is the purview of the administration and the Board of Education. It is not the purview of other outside boards or the RTM. This is a consistent philosophy attributable to the administration's need for flexibility within the budget control account. That being said, one area for Board of Education consideration discussed by the committee is the deferral of the kindergarten first-grade displays for $88,000. Another area raised by the board and worthy of discussion is the number of kindergarten through second-grade tablets, fifth-grade Chromebooks, and ninth-grade iPads in the budget. Potential savings exist based on anticipated enrollment and determining thereafter what is the optimum number of additional devices to be ordered based upon prior experience. Potential adjustments to the requested capital projects were new wireless clock systems at Henley, Holmes, and Royal for $75,000, and the renovation of the basement into the copy center at Central Office for $135,000.
Again, we thank the Board of Education for giving the RTM Finance and Budget Committee an opportunity to provide our initial thoughts and comments on the proposed budget. There are additional questions which we will forward to the board under separate cover. In closing, the proposed budget reflects a 3.99% increase. There have been discussions of additions. There are few silver bullet reductions. The committee looks forward to the board's robust deliberations necessary to arrive at the final Board of Education approved budget. Thank you.
Mrs. Lane, Mr. Orfanos, thank you very much again for your committee and all your hard work of reviewing and coming up with those questions and for the discussion tonight. We look forward to continuing to work with you, and as soon as you can send that information over, it would be appreciated, but thank you again for participating. Appreciate it. Just an FYI, there was a conflict tonight. The Board of Finance is actually in their own meeting this evening, so that is the conflict with the Board of Finance. We will continue to work with them, and we have been in touch with them throughout the whole process, so they will be organizing their thoughts and comments and getting them to us, but there was a conflict with one of their meetings this evening. So, we will move on from there. We'll move on to next agenda item. Further discussion on the 2021-22 proposed budget, and any follow-up questions, terms of board questions. Dr. Adley?
Yes, thank you. Well, we have a couple of meetings to get our work accomplished. We did attach, yes, thank you. We did attach some of the Board of Finance, Board of the RTM F&amp;B, RTM Education initial questions. If there are any questions from the board about those, we're happy to entertain those, and we're also happy to entertain an ongoing discussion about where we go from here.
We'll open it up to board questions and comments. Mrs. Stein?
Touching on a point just raised by F&amp;B, can you, Rich, speak a little bit to the impact if we were to defer the BCS study, Building Condition Study, per year? What impact that would have?
So at some point, you will have to do a building condition survey. Typically districts will do it every five years. It's kind of like a refresh to kind of give a roadmap for your capital plan. So if you were to defer it a year, your current KGND study would be expired a year. We would obviously have to rely on Mike Lynch to kind of roll forward with the capital request to see if he's it, but you will have to do it at some point. Typically architectural costs do rise with inflation, so we would expect the cost to increase. Mike has reached out to a couple of other vendors just to get an additional quote or two from what we had originally for the budget. So we're just waiting to get those to see if there's any revised cost.
And Rich, good question. Mrs. Stein, just in line with that, you may not have the answer, but I'm assuming, I don't know if eliminating one school makes all that much difference, but we have a brand new school being built, so I don't know what that takes out of the equation.
Mike is, you know, specifically letting a couple of those architectural firms know that Oxford wouldn't be really an issue for this one, so we'd look at the sticks plus this building, Central Office. So we'll hope for that revised quote and then obviously all the work that's been done with Northeast Collaborative for the portable study would be factored in as well.
Great, thank you. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Mr. Seeny?
Thank you, Rich and Dr. Adley for providing the budget control numbers. Can you just remind me? So fiscal year 21 budget control was used when it's for special education paras. Were they at all put into the RC for COVID or were these totally separate?
They were separate.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Ackman?
I have a new one with a button. Thanks. Can we talk a little bit about the IDEA program at the high school? And last year we said we were going to revisit how many people enrolled in it. And I'm really looking to see that what do we, what do we think the strengths of that program are? What do we think the opportunities for those children are if that program didn't exist and what's the budget impact?
Chris, you can talk about the program. The enrollment has increased significantly. I think it's 20 something in the class at this particular point, so last year it was significantly lower than that. And obviously it gives the children at the ninth grade level that opportunity to end of the delay their learning. I was most concerned about whether the enrollment would continue to play out. And in all honesty, there's a question always on the table of secondary school. Should there be a IDEA program or that's that level of programming in a high school? So it's there's lots of opportunities for children at the high school to explore their interests and diversify and also to meet their individual needs, perhaps more so in many ways than in the younger grade levels where the programs are robust in that regard and provide additional opportunities for them. So the good news is it's to be liked, all the things you've said about support services. It's great that we have them. It's in many ways it's tremendous that we have them. They're not always evident in high schools. I'll be honest with you, that's a great opportunity for our kids. So similarly for the IDEA program, it's wonderful for that population that we have. As long as it's sustainable in terms of enrollment and so on, that's, that to me would be the main consideration. But there are sometimes a bigger question overall, should a program like IDEA and at a ninth grade level exist or not exist? It's not, it's not a, it's not a customary or usual program, and to be honest with you, but that's a, that's an evaluation of a program this year, but what we'd want to do is to say, is enrollment going to be adequate this year because it's also a high cost program if the enrollment does not? And as it plays out, Chris, do you have the exact number? It's something, isn't it?
It's 21.
21, okay. So this year played out.
Do you have something on that or you want to move on?
I just wanted to know, it's on IDEA.
Okay, because I have a follow-up, but.
Okay, I just wanted to sorry. Rich, I just wanted to know, I know in the budget, it's $14,953 for ninth grade IDEA. What is the total budgetary impact of that program?
Just the high school?
Yes, just the ninth grade.
So it would be that point two of an F.
And that's it? There's no, there wouldn't be any benefits associated with that?
No, since it's a portion of a person, that other person, that person would still exist in some capacity within the district.
So maybe point eight somewhere else and that's, and their benefits would stay in place, they remain unchanged. Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Stein?
So as a follow-up to that, and this may be where you're going. Last year when we raised it, and I think I was the one who put it on the table, one of the things we asked was sort of, to your point, Dr. Adley, a review of IDEA and is the culminating year of a program appropriate in a transition year, being ninth grade? And given the diversity of programs at our high school for self-study and different tracks, you know, have we looked at ending the program in eighth? And I think we left that question last year and I don't think we've gotten any answers on it, so I'd love to see outside of the budget, maybe some information.
Mrs. Ackman?
So I guess what I'm looking for, and I struggle a little bit with the comparison with support services because I want to give all children the ability to kind of reach and stretch and grow. And sometimes kids need support in order to do that. So my question would be, are we giving kind of our, our kids who take advantage of the IDEA program? Do we think that IDEA gives them something very unique and specific that they can't utilize through honors and AP offerings? And that's what I'm struggling with as a board member as we continue this program because I want to make sure those kids are challenged and have rigor. And I think we've heard from those parents that sometimes in the younger years, they'd like more opportunities. Is that money better spent at elementary and middle sex? Because in the high school you have lots of, in theory, I need to hear from you educationally, in theory, lots of honors and AP offering that could offer you that. So is it a reallocation of money? Is this the right place for the money? Or is this an area that the board in a high budget year needs, needs to understand? So I'm just looking at, are we serving the needs of those kids in the best way by this program?
Thank you, Mrs..
You don't have that answer right now.
I will say this, the program itself is what we should be doing in lots of the classes. A lot of the experiences that are types of experiences that are happening in these classes are the types of experiences should be happening in lots of classes, not sense than that, but, but the pursuit of your special interests and look and turn it into your special interest and the performance-based nature of it pervasively should be, should be experiences that are open to all children.
Thank you. Mrs. McCannan?
I have a question, but just adding on to that, that whole, that's a component of the strategic plan for after I'd be taking a look at differentiation and learning. My question is, one of the committees mentioned concerns about security at the middle school. Do you have any concerns about the current state of security at the middle school, given the recent weekend?
I don't, in the sense of the security that is in place for the students. We're always looking at security. We're always evaluating security. We're always doing our drills and we're always going to continue to make improvements in security. Clearly someone getting into the building is a problem, right? And we have to try and rectify that and welcome us to place that's what we're trying to do. But I don't have immediate concerns about the security.
Any further bird, bird, board questions or comments? Mrs. Ritchie?
So it was brought up by F and B and I've sort of been looking at the technology budget. So I was wondering if maybe administration could just tell us what the impact they mentioned K21 displays being deferred. I don't want to defer anything if it's going to have an educational impact, so what would happen if we deferred those?
Well, everything like I just probably is fact, we mostly have an educational impact that we defer. So the impact on the screen at the early grade level, again, that was, that was, that was planned to be part of the budget initially. But as we tried to make it work, the jigsaw puzzle worked, there were certain things that and we were not able to include. And just the same way as, you know, we learned from COVID that we needed, we probably need another technician, right? Ideally, ideally, right? I couldn't include that. So these are things in addition to the reductions that you know that we have made that have just been difficult decisions to put together, part of this, part of the story that that they comment on at RTM here. So, so educationally, it's another year without, without that. Can we deal with it? We can deal with it. It's not ideal, but, but there are some things that are going to be deferred.
Mrs. Ritchie?
Just staying on technology, so I just ask administration to take a look at that and make sure that we're being efficient when planning for technology, in other words, not over ordering any devices and basing the orders on what we see as projected enrollment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. Mrs. McCannan?
Dr. Adley, can you address the question about whether there's a relationship and if so, what it is between this study with Marilyn Friend and SDI? And the potential of changing the administrative structure at the elementary schools? What is the scope of that study? What is it looking at and what are the, what are you looking to find?
Well, I'm going to ask Shirley to address that.
Good evening, and may I, may I address that? And they really are separate to Mr. McCannan's point to the question. So Marilyn's work doing it is actually going, it was paused because of COVID. We actually have her coming remotely into districts at our next PD session on February 12th. But it's really looking about best practices in specially designed instruction in elementary schools, looking at the idea of our push-in programs and pull-out programs and the notion of how can we best address their needs. It's really not an administrative, you know, specially designed instruction is all of good instruction that happens to support students. So there isn't really a nexus between specially designed instruction and the appointment of APs. It's really about teaching and learning. And did we, and how are we looking at our instructional support for all our students in the elementary schools? So we've begun with looking at what we currently do in terms of our push-in practices, looking at our cohort of students, working with our teams, both administrators and teachers. But the SDI piece is really about teaching and learning. The idea of push-in and pull-out programs is what we're looking at of how we put cohorts of students together and how we can best address their needs. It's very separate from assistant principals.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. Any additional board questions or comments? Mr. Seeny?
One of the return questions, I think, from both committees was remediation issue coming out of this year's crisis year. And maybe there were questions whether or not, yeah, you budgeted for that or how you expect to handle that. So I think you touched upon it in a few of the other meetings, Dr. Adley, but maybe if you could add just a little more color on that, how you're thinking about that.
So there's, in Shirley's RC, there is an amount that is, and I believe it's consultant services, support services for some of that, but it's not awfully, it's what she knows at this particular point from IEPs. But beyond that, there, we haven't budgeted and set aside compensatory services. Beyond what is it, what Shirley has identified in that, in the IEPs?
And if I may just add to that, and I think I did speak to a Dr. Adley last time we did our, our budget presentation. What we looked at is we know that things have changed in terms of recovery of services. So as of this date, we're projecting what we may need to consider. So what did change in those lines are the delivery of services, the size of a group, the frequency, the duration, based on current levels of performance. So as we continue with PPT process, as we look at progress monitoring, we're able to make a projected amount, we believe, in the budget of what we'll need for those services. We know it's in the areas of related services. We know it's about speech and language. We know it could be about OT and PT and special education instruction. So we're looking at as we progress monitor, as we anticipate PPTs, as we go into spring also, and look at our extended school year program also, that we, what we might need to do to support all of our students.
I think that's just one follow-up. Do we expect a increase in those numbers? You know, the number of IEPs, just given some of the struggles that some of our students are having in this environment?
There, there may be, again, there's, there's response to intervention through SRBI. There's response to intervention in differentiation. There may be students, again, depending on when students and referrals, I know one of our other board members that asked this question. You know, the referral process is really based on looking at learning differences. So there'll be two ways of looking at the structure, which is, one, for all students. If there is some regression or there is some pause in their learning, we'll work in our general education classrooms with support to make sure we can differentiate and help students retrieve those skills. If there are students who aren't able to work alongside their peers and in terms of anticipated levels of progress, there may be additional referrals to the PPT to consider evaluation.
But just to be clear from a budget standpoint, the only anticipation is what you mentioned in Shirley's RC.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Perrin?
I just want to push on that a little bit. I think the idea of what Mrs. Klein mentioned is that there will be, there's the potential for remediation of any student, not just a student that falls in special education category. So I think that my question is, do we have enough support in the budget for those children that may not have an IEP that may need a little extra boost? And to be perfectly honest, I'm concerned about eliminating some, some para support just because of that. I think that the added hands in classrooms is important. So just love to hear your thoughts on how those kids that may not fall into special education who may need some extra help, do we have the funding for that?
Thank you, Mrs. Perrin. Mrs. Ackman? Oh, good.
Well, certainly the SRBI Level 1 is servicing all our children. And as I said before, in part of again, removing some of the support services, the power professionals. You could easily add power professionals where you start with them, where you end with them, how many you have. That's a difficult decision and I respect our teachers because of always, our youngest, our elementary teachers, I would say in general, like elementary teachers that well, what can I say, but I respect them tremendously. And to be an elementary teacher, I would love to have another set of hands, another person in the room, but where does that stop? Where does it end? That's not an easy, not an easy call, but certainly the concern for the students who are maybe in the middle, so to speak, I don't want to have a better term, very conscious of all our students, that's what we're about here, servicing all students. So I would not bring a budget forward that I didn't think was addressing some capacity all of our students or I was removing significant supports from a particular category of student, I wouldn't do that. But if I understand how the question would be on the table.
Thank you. Mrs. Ackman?
So I think it goes along the same theme, but I'm looking here at the RTM Education's question. And their first question on RC1 includes if the 200 level at Darien High School has been eliminated, how it'll impact 300 level? And I think maybe Mr. Tramburger or Dr. Adley, if you could speak to, nobody's actually talking about eliminating lab classes. We don't really, 200, 300, we're talking about team teaching, which is in the general ed classroom, which used to be what we'd call 300 level classes. So can you maybe, just for the general public, and it might help as we talk about programs, talk a little bit about the difference? I think people are confusing our lab taught, our lab classes and our team teaching classes right now.
Sure. So a team-taught class, and there might be, there are minimal sections of them that would exist. So in social studies, for example, there might be two opportunities for a team-taught class, meaning there are two certified teachers in that classroom at the same time. So students are receiving that support within the, the parameters or the context of just that class. The difference with a lab class is, and it's totally different because you don't have a team-taught lab class. So in a lab class, you would have your teacher for your social studies class, but then also have another opportunity to see that teacher across the eight-day rotation. I think it's usually two or three. So when you're hearing a question about the constraints, that means that the student needs two different periods of their day, one for the class, then another to receive that support. And if they receive multiple supports in different labs, like if they're in a social studies and an English lab, that locks up more days across that rotation. And for the most part, when students are in a lab class, they get that extra support from their teacher. Their regular.
That's what I think, like, so this question's a little confusing because no one's talking about eliminating that, which at one point a few years ago we called 200 level. We're talking about, or the superintendent, if I'm understanding, has proposed at the 300 level, a general education, a very kind of general ed per se, grade level class. There are some sections that have two teachers in them to provide supports to children.
That's correct.
Okay. So nobody's eliminating lab classes. But there's a different concern if you eliminate them, where you have more children needing lab. But I do think the terms are getting confused, and I just want everyone listening to know what the programs actually are.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Good, good points.
And there will be a presentation here at the next board meeting around team teaching, this particular topic.
Mrs. McCammon.
Moving back a little bit to the question of remediation, I would love to understand how scalable our current infrastructure, particularly for SRBI and ELL, is? How much capacity do we have if we, if we find that we have an additional 10 to 15% of children who need response to intervention? Do we have that capacity in our current staff? If not, what capacity do we have? I don't ask that that be answered tonight, but I would love a more formal answer to what our current, what we currently have, and if we hit sort of a low, medium, worst-case scenario, where we do and don't have resources and what we could anticipate.
Thank you, Mrs. McCammon.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ritchie.
Thanks. I just want to continue on this for, just concerned about the timing, Shirley, because I know we don't do the PPTs until the spring or later in the year. So I feel like, I'm just concerned that we're going to have a lot of adjustments to IEPs. And while we're planning for what we know right now, we don't know what we don't know. And I think, I'm just concerned that it's going to be more than we know or think. So I guess I just wanted to voice that concern and just to make sure that we are budgeting for what we expect to be the unexpected, if that makes any sense.
It makes perfect sense, and you're, and I'm in agreement, it's, it's the unexpected. We've done, you know, our two delegates, the best we can to look at our students, and we can't predict, again, with 100% certainty that we have anticipated enough. But I think we've been, we've been diligent, we've looked at our programs, we've looked at our students. Many of, as you said, the PPTs that will happen for ESY starts somewhere around February, March for that. But we've also looked at progress monitoring and have already started to work with students and families of, for many students who may already require that level of support. Again, I think a lot of it is what we've tried to do is look at size of group. A lot of it is frequency, a lot of it is duration, and looking at what they may need. And again, it's, it's an estimation of it, we understand that, and we're doing the best just with our service providers giving us feedback as they continue to progress monitor our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. I, I think, you know, what I'm hearing across the board is, you know, a concern, and I mean, I hear it when I do speak to parents. It's just, we need to constantly monitor what you may need from a remediation standpoint. And I think if we're going to invest anywhere, you know, this is the time that we need to do that. And we don't know how long it's going to take. We don't know what we don't know to the point of the comments, but I think we would appreciate a regular update as to how you see things progressing so that we can be ahead of it in terms of what resources that you need. I think that would be important. And then I would ask, not for an answer now, but as you do this planning around remediation, you see what your needs are, is there a consideration of how ESY and summer school plays into that? And how can we use that infrastructure that we have in place to help with whatever remediation may be needed?
We certainly can do that, and you know, we're just beginning to staff our ESY, actually, the latter went out today. So we're looking at also increasing the opportunity for extended periods of time during ESY as well, and seeing the availability of staff to support that.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. Mrs. Ackman.
So yes, and then my concern is also, how do you budget for that? Like, Mrs. McCann asked a question, you know, what's the low, medium, high? My question would be, what are we asking the administration to do? I mean, Mrs. Klein, I hear you're saying you're monitoring the IEPs, you're monitoring your intercurrent interventions, what we, but the last thing we can do is just create a pool, saying, well, we might have remediation. Like, I just don't know how we, how we, or what we're asking the administration to quantify such to budget for, other than monitoring our current IEPs. I think it's actually what in a normal year we face all the time, and we try to explain that to the other bodies. Lots of times we have kids we didn't anticipate with needs, and we meet them at the door. This year, we may see more of that, or it may, but I don't know how you quantify that as a budget item responsibly, other than creating like a pool of money, which people are going to start asking a lot of questions, what about that number? So I would love to quantify it, I guess I'm asking the board, how do we, what are we asking of the administration to bring back to us?
Well, I think it's a good point. I mean, I, I think, based on what Mrs. Klein has already presented to us and Dr. Adley, as they go through the process each month of meeting with students or students get, you know, bumped up to them, they continue to see that. I think we have to continue to understand how that process is impacting what they feel they need from a resource standpoint. I don't, I don't know that we can put a quantifiable metric on it that we can see each month. We have to, in my view, we have to rely on the experts that are living it and doing it each day, but keeping us informed about what the potential impact would be. I think in some ways, this is where budget control comes into play in giving the administration the ability to find a resource that they may need in terms of a teacher or power or something like that, if they see what remediation is needed. So your point is spot on. Everyone always looks for metrics and everyone always looks for the numbers. But I think this is so qualitative in terms of understanding what the needs are as you go through the process with these students and as, as more students are brought up to you. Mrs. Ritchie.
Oh, me.
Mrs. Ritchie yields her time to Mrs. Ackman.
I think the harder group to assess is what Dr. Adley referred to, which is the middle, right? And so I would assume the message that will be sent to teachers at the beginning of the school next year, let's say we are back to normal, fingers crossed. I did hear anecdotally this year, for instance, in some math classes for kids who missed in the spring, teachers had to spend their first couple of weeks reviewing. And so maybe not just budgetary impact, but we need to think about adjusting how the curriculum begins at the beginning of the school year, if we are back to normal, to account for some, you know, larger scale remediation for all students, just to make sure everyone has the baseline they need.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein. So for those types of things, those are built into Christopher's budget for the most part. So that, that, there's, there's an expense, expenditure that we can anticipate and can plan for. But Shirley said through IEPs, and someone just mentioned budget, I don't have a budget control for remediation expenses that I'm not projecting. There's nothing in this budget that you can't say, let's look at that line item and see what you're projecting on and how you're expanding it. There is no set aside fund for unanticipated remediation expenses. There just isn't. They are projected as best as we can based on progress monitoring IEPs.
Mrs. Ritchie.
I wanted to go back to the lab versus the team teaching. And just for history lesson for me, we put team teaching in place to eliminate the 200 level courses. And that fulfilled the need, no, okay, missing them. So, so that's wrong. So that the team taught was not for the 200 level courses, but we eliminated 200 level course. Those are, those were eliminated, correct? Or we still have them?
I'm not the best person on a history lesson. I can find the answer.
Tara seems like she might know.
So co-taught in lab classes, which provides significant supports for students. And what we were finding is that was giving, what we, what really was happening is kids who are going into college, there was kind of a connotation around 200 level. And what we were saying is, can we educate kids and give them as much support so they have as many of the opportunities to make whatever their next step is when they graduate as any other child, right? And so the lab, we started it, I think, first we started it in sciences, then we expanded to the humanities, to really support kids. And we saw kids kind of moving through it and enjoying it and really finding success. Team teaching came in as a part of a different model, and I think it might have been Amherst, an Amherst College model that came down. And it was, what could you do with two certified teachers in a class for kids who didn't necessarily have identified needs? But it was supporting learners who kind of needed a little more adult, or it created a different environment in the classroom where someone could relate to one teacher or, or another teacher. And it was really kids in the middle, our gen ed kids, who may be two adults in a room for those 40 minutes. And so sometimes it was referred in classes, sometimes you just ended up in there. But it was this model of having two adults trusted in the room. So that's where I get a little concerned, and clearly I understand my education is confused because it's confusing. We are not eliminating those lab level classes. Those are staying for kids, those kids who need those supports. And if anything, I think this board has expressed, we're seeing those classes fill very quickly, and are they getting too big? And there's some questions around that. We're talking about the team, the co-taught, it's a general education class. There may be students in it who receive support or on IEPs.
It's just not co-taught. Co-taught is a special ed and a general ed. Team taught is too general.
This is, but there can be kids in that class who are on IEPs.
Yes, just in terms of terminology to split them.
Yes, this is team taught, general education classroom, where supports are provided. So they are 300, they are a regular, I mean, we used to call them 300 level classes. They are regular course study for ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grader. There are two certified teachers in the room, teaching a class.
Okay. And we just, we're eliminating the team taught classes for history and English, but it's not as if students are going to be taking a lab class instead. They're just going to be taking a regular history or English class, is that?
With one teacher.
With one teacher. So we feel that these students that we created this team taught course or no, no longer need that level of support and can get provided with appropriate teaching in a regular education class. I guess that's where my concern is, if we created these classes for a reason, and now they're being eliminated, not being replaced by the lab classes, are we able to capture?
In some cases, the students are in both classes, that there's scenarios where that is the case also. And also the size of the classes have been, just the recommended procedure through the high school itself has shown that it's an area that we could potentially look at. And you'll hear it actually go in presentation from Principal Dunn on the exact details of it.
I think what Mrs. McCammon is trying to, with co-taught is very. Terminology, right? There are co-taught classes with a general education teacher and a special education teacher, and that's a different model. So there's three different models that are being kind of collapsed into one. So maybe Mrs. Dunn's presentation will help. The team is two certified teachers, like, teaching a classroom.
So I think you've got a taste if your presentation is not.
We're ready to go. We're ready to go.
Additional information. Mr. Seeny.
I want to go back to remediation issue because I was the one who, I think, started the conversation. In late November, there was a joint press release by the seven governors in the Northeast region. I'll send it around when it ends. There's growing evidence that the more time children spend outside of school increases the risk of mental health harm and affects their ability to truly learn. So, you know, the roots of my question were tied to the fact that we have a number of students still not going full time. And, you know, based on what the experts are seeing on a real time basis, I know we can't anticipate everything. But on a real time basis, what you're seeing, what you're seeing, you know, direct requests from the parents and how kids are dealing with this, that's where I was kind of going. And I realized we can't budget for the unknown, but also, you know, given that you're seeing on a daily basis, maybe you had some additional insight on that. So I just wanted to outline that.
My additional insight will be, we're striving as best as we can to return students to school as safely as we can. And tomorrow we'll have another meeting with our medical advisors and certainly, certainly the level one intervention, SRBI level one intervention for all students, to get them in front of a teacher as safely and as quickly as we can. I mean, that's what we're trying to do, John.
So I think to sum up a lot of that is, the board's concern is, and I think everyone in town is, you know, making sure we have the right resources and the right plan in place for remediation. And I think what you've heard is, there's support there from the board, just constant communication around the board table as to what your needs are so that we can do the right thing in terms of resources and dollars needed for remediation. Any additional questions or comments from the board?
Yeah.
No pressure.
Can you talk to us a little bit now about how we account for our tech buys? Right? If we do numbers, how do we say, okay, we, we, you know, we have 100 students, but we need to buy 150? Is it based off experience? We see, you know, over the last few years, we've seen 50 need to be replaced. Is it a best guess? Is it, how are we coming up? Well, I heard FNB ask us a little bit about how are you coming up with your averages of numbers?
Well, it's generally based on number of sections and class size and then with a, a small buffer of additional, additional computers. Richard, do you have the numbers in front of you?
So for the most part, it's built on enrollment. In terms of like Chromebook devices, there are always a significant number that are kind of offline for repairs. And one of the things we saw this year was the repair line go up to about $85, $90,000 a year. So when you take that device, you need a spare to put back in that child's hand. So nothing, there's no gap. Usually build a small number of spares, primarily with the Chromebooks and even with the iPads as well.
Additional, Mrs. McCammon.
The area where I would love to understand from a capacity perspective, again, I get the point that we may not change our, our budget today, but this is about, you know, looking at the budget in the context of other expenses we might look, we might see. Our, now that we have a number of psychologists and social workers throughout the district, what is the capacity for those positions? If we find that, I know we have some exciting social emotional learning planned for the coming year, but how, how taxed are they right now? And if we find that there is a load over the next six months, nine months, that is over the current load, what would that do?
Dr. Adley and Mr. Rudel, I think it's come up a couple of times. And I don't know if you have, you know, prior to the next meeting, get information out to us that the whole idea of what took this year's budget to 399 in terms of 3.99 in terms of what was deferred or carried over. I think we'd like to see, kind of, the budget would have been X without the deferrals, both just in general operating and I guess also on the capital side. I know some folks have been working on their own numbers behind the scene, but I think that would help put it in context. You know, you can defer, defer, defer. At some point in time, it's going to come up and have to be done. And chances are, there's going to be an increase in cost. So I don't know if from year to year, there's that much of an increase in costs and some of the stuff we defer that makes that much of a difference. But I think if you can define that, will give a better picture as to, you know, here's the budget, here's the budget plus what we defer. Mr. Seeny.
And then one of the follow ups I had from the all day meeting, which I don't know how available the information was, but it was, you know, how much of the surplus was used for pre-buys and late year, very late year transfers and that sort of thing. I know it's tough to replicate. I thought I heard a couple of board members that might be able to help on that, but I'd love to just better understand that as well.
So just kind of, I think that makes sense, just kind of a recap. So it's kind of a refresh and a recap to know what we deferred, what we pre-bought, how it plays into the budget and what the difference is to give us a more read as to what the budget would have been.
So our initial, our initial number was around 2.22 of a percent. However, it depends what you define pre-purchase. So we'll, we'll present what we have and we'll have the board to see if it agrees with it.
Thank you. Mrs. Ritchie.
Just for clarification, Mr. Seeny, are you asking for historical or just for last year?
Well, last year is, I think, pretty easy because we have the pre-buy numbers. But, you know, when I originally stated the question, I said pre-buys. And then it was clarified that there were a number of transfers very late in the fiscal year and previous years. And people might be able to kind of reconstruct that. I don't want to create a lot of work, but.
I think let's, my opinion is, let's focus on this past year. We can't keep going back in history. These people have jobs to do on a daily basis. I don't know what it would prove.
I just don't know, with Dr. Adley and Rich not being here, they might not even, like, we could go through all the transfers that were made.
I think there's just a data challenge half the time.
Yeah. And we, we presented it differently back then because we commingled transfers and account reconciliation. So it could be muddled. It just might be a difficult thing to pull out.
I was told that, but I, okay, understood.
I think we have to, at some point, I, I don't, you know, information is great to have, but at some point, I think we have to balance the day job. We just talked for I don't know how long about remediation. So we need the administration and the teachers focused on day to day. And the budget process is difficult enough. So I think we just need to think about what we're asking for, what we're looking for and what it's going to impact or how it's going to make our decisions, you know, as we go through this process. Let's just be cautious of that. Mrs. Ackman.
I have a question on our elementary program coordinators. And mostly because last week, we accepted the resignation of our elementary program coordinator. And is there any, given that, and we wish her well and we will miss her very much, is there any opportunity to reorganize, realign, look at personnel there?
So any, and all honesty, and anytime anybody leaves the organization, it's a time for pause and to look and see, do we do anything different than, than the model is in place right now? And it's fair to say that that is where we are right now.
Okay. And not only because we accepted that resignation. As far as I think that was working great, but.
And no, actually, you know, no one, including our director, should be upset about that, but that's, that's just what you do, right? And that is what we are doing. So stay tuned.
Mrs. Ritchie.
Just along those lines, then, could we have what the budgetary impact would be to eliminate that position permanently?
If you could just stay tuned. That would be included as part of any, if there was a change. You basically have, you know, you have two directors of it.
Mr. Brown. Mrs. Perrin. Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Fully conscious of the prior conversation, not to make more work. Rich, will we look at the question about expenses versus capital items? Could you give us, not the second, could you give us a little color from an accounting perspective as to what falls into what bucket? And then just as a corollary to that, the Chromebooks, and I think some of the iPads, we wound up having to upgrade them, they have no residual value. Do we figure residual value into our calculations or useful life? I'm just wondering how our estimates are tracking to our experience, broad without, if that's not too much of an effort, if you can give us some generalities. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments as we go through the process? Mrs. Ackman.
So I would say I'm going to need, I would like to hear more about the demography report. I, I feel like we, it's new that we do them every year, so I'd need to understand where, maybe the board can decide, you know, how accurate have we been with our, with our other models? Why would we go to every year? What would we gain by going to every year? Or is there something unique in this time period that demands that we do it every year? Because I think we had our own internal, then every couple of years, Mo and McBroom would do one and it would kind of true up our numbers and see where we are. And then there was a third model, I can't remember what we called it right now, but just if we're going to switch to every year, I'd love to know what we gained.
We'll certainly answer the question, the backman. I don't know if I'm doing myself any favors here, but the, the most useful part of it, in some cases, there's always the kindergarten and the one that's most unpredictable is the kindergarten. So, but anyway, we will answer it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I will then make a motion to adjourn.
Can I just?
Yes, Dr. Adley.
Just for clarity, the administration will respond to these and get the mic to the board in advance for preparation for the next meeting.
I see FNB has sent in their comments also, so we'll shoot them out as quickly as we can. Great, thank you all. Thank you, everyone that's on the, the screens. Thank you very much for your time. I'll make them, yes, Mr. Brown. Oh, thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. Ritchie and Mr. Brown, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Have a good evening and a good rest of the week.